All right, it is 7:03. I will call us to order. This is the regularly scheduled October 27th, 2025 meeting of the East Lansing Board of Education. Trustee Taikaki, can you, oh, actually, sorry, I need to do a roll call. So, Ms. Hoekor, can we get a roll call?
Trustee Martin.
Here.
Trustee Lyons, not here. Trustee Edsel.
Here.
Trustee Ferris Highland.
Here.
Trustee Chambers.
Present.
Trustee Torres.
Here.
Trustee Taikaki.
Here.
Student Representative DiJaga.
Here.
Student Representative Megya.
Here.
And Superintendent Lako.
Here.
Thank you. Trustee Taikaki, can you read our mission statement?
Our mission statement is nurturing each child, educating all students, and building world citizens.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the agenda of the October 27th, 2025 regular meeting as presented.
Second.
The motion was made by Trustee Ferris Highland, seconded by Trustee Torres. Is there any discussion before we move to a vote? All in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye. Aye. In the opposition, the motion carries unanimously. The next item is the approval of minutes. Can I get a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the October 14, 2025 regular meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
So, the motion is made by Trustee Taikaki, seconded by Trustee Chambers. Do we have any changes or discussion of the minutes? All in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye. Aye. In the opposition, the motion carries unanimously. Next up is recognition. Trustee Ferris Highland, is there any recognition?
I do have one awesome item. The marching band joined the Michigan Competing Band Association last year and is one of 60 bands that competes throughout the fall. Last week, they placed ninth in Flight Two, which earned them a trip to perform at the state championship finals at Ford Field this Saturday at 11:14 a.m. They are one of 50 marching bands from the state of Michigan that will be performing their 2025 show Beacons on Saturday. The marching band has 143 East Lansing High School students in grades nine through 12 and is directed by Dave Larsalier with percussion instructor Calvin Dugan and color guard instructor Anna Treet. So, quite an honor, and they're so great. Yes, you'll be there. You're going.
I'll be there. I already have tickets. I just have to say, like, I mean, I did marching band back in my day. It was nothing like this. Like, the artistry and the, like, production that is involved. And I think that our show is spectacular. But then going to the semifinals on Saturday and seeing some of these other bands too, it's just extraordinary what these young people do on the field, like, I could never have imagined. So, I'm really excited to go see the bands on Saturday.
Congrats to them.
I'd like to add something.
Yes, please.
So, on Thursday, October 23rd, I presented at the Smithsonian National Youth Summit Panel that was hosted at MSU, and two of our teachers, Julie Beridge and Emily Zan, repped East Lansing well. They took our students there. There were students from Waverly and, I can't remember the other school district. But, East Lansing was presented well and did a great job at really stumping the panelists with some really difficult questions. But, yeah, they did a great job, and it was great to see East Lansing colors out there at the summit.
Cool. Thanks for adding that. Awesome.
That's very cool. Is there any other recognition from other board members? I love that it's an airline schedule, 11:14 a.m.
Oh, and listen, you, they, I mean, we have 143 participants in our marching band, which is big. But, they are all big. And so, and when they say 11:14, they are not kidding. Like, and they move through, those bands get on the field and get off the field, the next one is ready. Like, it's some logistics, extraordinary presentations there, like, yeah. So, they will perform at 11:14, I am confident.
And it's just a really great experience to get to go down the field where, you know, you see it on TV. You know, it's really a neat thing to get to do.
So cool.
All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is our student representative report. You guys should come on up.
Put some clothes on, it's cold out there. That's the mom in me.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight's, we're gonna give another, like, just basic school-wide update. But, I also first wanted to add that I actually went to the youth summit thing. So, it was actually a really good opportunity, so I'm not exactly sure who to thank for setting it up, but I just wanted to also get that out there. Thank you. I actually had three, and they never got to any of them. So, basically, Powder Puff happened last Thursday, and it was a really big success with the seniors winning and the Trojan community raising over $4,000 for the Carmonos Cancer Center at McLaren. It's the most we've ever raised. And then, on top of this, our very own Liam Prycer, who's actually sitting in a corner right there, a cross-country runner, qualified for the cross-country states, like, in their regional event last Friday. And he was, like, the only qualifying member in our whole cross-country program. And we also have Kinley Kiefer, who qualified, like, for the Gulf State, like, regionals. So, we have a lot of great, talented students. Over the weekend, I actually participated in this. UNICEF Key Club in Pickleball hosted their yearly pickleball tournament to raise money for UNICEF. Students had a lot of fun, and the winner actually, the winners actually turned out to be Hair Orange and Mr. Paddock. So, yeah, congrats to them. And then, also, like, a follow-up on our last update about the marching band. They had a really successful day, like, performing at all the elementary schools, and it's like a great way to get some exposure about, like, the performing arts programs early on. And I also wanted to add on, like, the Saturday thing, they won, like, ninth place in Flight Two, and they've also won best percussion. So, they're getting some, like, extra awards there too, which is really nice. And they're gonna be performing at Ford Field this Saturday. And then, the girls' swim team ended their season recently, along with other fall sports. However, we wanted to shout out the senior class this year. They've remained undefeated in the pool, in their pool, so basically, their home meets since their freshman year. So, they're a very talented class, and we'd like to give a special shout-out to Junior Ava Harmon, since she's qualified Miska, which is based, for Miska, which is basically like the swim state finals. And then, we're also coming off a very rewarding win from last Friday. Our varsity football team beat Holt. I'm not 100% sure if they had a place in the playoffs before that, but I know that they do now, and I'm pretty sure they have two confirmed games, with one of them being this Friday, which is Halloween. And, yeah, so there's, we're hoping, like, for some great student turnout there. And then, later in November, we also have our school's MCN students attending their trip. I don't know, where was that? That's like, you guys have to fly there, right? Yeah, I think it's to Virginia. To Virginia. And then, I don't know, I don't think this was in our report, but we also have Model UN has their, like, CASC conference coming up, so that's also something that's going on. And then, yeah, so generally, it's just been a very busy month. We're coming close to, like, early college application deadlines as well on November 1st. And we're all just, like, looking forward to, like, preseason workouts, tryouts, and the beginning of all of our winter sports. So, thank you for your time, and we wish you guys have a great Halloween, or whatever you're doing on Friday.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And congratulations, Mr. Prycer. That's impressive. The next item on the agenda is our superintendent's report. So, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Lako.
Thank you. I have a much shorter one this week than last meeting. And yes, you are going to Virginia. You're going to Alexandria City Public Schools for the MCN conference. So, we'll be sending a group of students with some of our staff chaperones to the MCN student conference here in November. First of all, no school for students this Friday, October 31st. It's the second of five professional learning Fridays, so there will be no school for students Friday. Staff will be here. Also, I want to announce that East Lansing Public Schools is considering a new HIV/STI prevention and sex education curriculum for high school health classes called Rights, Respect, and Responsibility, published by Advocates for Youth. The Michigan-aligned version of Rights, Respect, and Responsibility has undergone review by a team of district educators, administrators, and parents and guardians, and has been recommended to the ELPS Board of Education for consideration. As part of ELPS's curriculum review and adoption process, members of the school community, caregivers, parents, families, educators, staff, and students are all welcome to review lessons and materials, ask questions, and provide input about the recommendation. The Board of Education will take action on this recommendation at the December 8th, 2025 board meeting. The open house will be held Wednesday, November 5th, so that's a week from this Wednesday, in the hub at East Lansing High School. The open house will run from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. with a presentation from 6:00 to 6:30, and there will be pizza and light refreshments available. And then, just a couple of things repeated, I've attached the school calendars for current year along with '26, '27, and '27, '28. That will go out with my updates this week. One more push with our social media, you can really see what's going on on a daily basis here in our schools. And then, I've added some additional important dates beyond this Friday. Again, new this year, we have no school Thanksgiving week, so from November 24th through 28th, there's no school. We have our third Friday professional staff, staff professional learning day, which is Friday, December 12th, and then, winter break from December 22nd through January 2nd. And that is all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Lako. Do we have any questions or comments for the superintendent about her presentation? There's gonna be a lot of happy people, that those calendars are final and out there. So, thanks for getting on that. I know that that's, it's hard to get all that stuff out for three years in advance, but it seems like people make plans pretty far out.
Yep, no problem.
All right, so the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Can I get a motion on our consent agenda?
I move that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda for the following item. A new hire, hiring, number one, hiring of Cindy Vu, 1.0 FTE, social, school social worker at McDonald's Middle School at MA Step 13, effective date of October 28th, 2025.
Second.
The motion was made by Trustee Chambers, seconded by Trustee Edsel. There is no discussion on the consent agenda, so we will move to a vote. All in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye. Aye. In the opposition, the motion carries unanimously. And I believe we have Ms. Vu here with us, is that right? Now, I don't wanna put any pressure on you, and don't put you on the spot, but it is our custom to invite new hires to come to the podium and introduce themselves and say a few words. It's optional, so you don't have to do it, but you are invited to come up if you would like, but again, it's optional.
You can just say aye.
Yep. Welcome.
All right.
The look of terror on your face, I wanted to give you an out.
Welcome aboard.
You're afraid of us, but not middle schoolers?
All right, we'll move on to the public comment section of the meeting. I don't know that we have any public comment forms today, but if you'd like to make public comment, there are blue forms that you can complete. I don't see anybody picking up a blue form, and I don't think we're going to have any public comment today. So, I'm going to close public comment and move to our presentation. Mr. Nielsen from Maynard Constellation on audited financial statements.
It's starting to grow in you.
This is fun.
Yeah.
Does everyone have a bound copy of the audit report?
Two now.
Excellent. Alrighty. Well, first, I want to say thank you to Dori, Lisa, Scott, and the team. We certainly ask for a lot as part of each audit each year, and I just want to say thank you. Our requests were responded to timely and accurately, so we certainly appreciate that. Couple of notes before we get into the financial statements themselves. The first one is that you did spend more than $750,000 in federal expenditures for fiscal year '25, which, if you recall, that's what requires the single audit or the federal compliance audit. The 2025 compliance supplement, which is, that's a document that comes from the federal government, that's what tells us as auditors what to test when we do our single audit testing over the major program. That has not been released yet. So, the report that you have in front of you today is the auditor's report on the financial statements themselves. The single audit reports, we can't issue until we've seen that compliance supplement. So, that is now required by the state of Michigan, by MDE, to be submitted within 30 days of the issuance of the compliance supplement. So, we have the testing done. It's all completed. In fact, we tested the child nutrition cluster as our major program, and I can tell you preliminarily that we don't have any findings. So, that's good to report. I just can't give you the final stamp of approval quite yet until we see those final reports from the government. So, just wanted to let you know, this packet is about 10 pages shorter than last year's. GASB 101 was a new accounting standard that was effective for fiscal year '25, dealt with compensated absences. So, under the old standard, you'd have had to, had an accrual on your government-wide financial statements that selects your statement of net position. It's not the balance sheet for the governmental funds. So, you would have had to had, have had an accrual on that financial statement for basically terminal payouts. So, when someone retires, what are they expected to be paid? The new standard has that included, but it also includes earned but unused PTO. So, most districts in the state had a pretty significant increase in the compensated absences liability that's recorded on your statement of net position. That liability doesn't impact your general fund fund balance. It only impacts the statement of net position. So, I'll point that out as we go through. But, wanted to mention, that was new this year, is about a $1 million increase in that liability. So, about a $1 million decrease in net position. Let's see, you had a new bond, so that's something to note. That certainly plays its way out throughout the financial statements. And then, with that, let's go ahead and flip to page one. Page one is the independent auditor's report. The opinions are the, the first two paragraphs there. It notes that "We audited the accompanying financial statements of the governmental activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of school district of the city of East Lansing as of and for the year ended June 30, 2025." "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information as of June 30, 2025." That's a clean opinion. That's the, what most people would call it. I'd call it an unmodified opinion. But, clean works too. That's the highest level of assurance that we can give as auditors. So, kudos there. A lot of hard work goes into that. Goes into the accounting throughout the year in order to get to this opinion. "Our basis for the opinion is described below that. We do conduct our audits in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards as well as government auditing standards." The next section talks about management's responsibility, which is to prepare the financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, or GAAP. Page two talks about our responsibility as the auditor. Page two has five bullet points that I'll call attention to in the middle of the page. "We do exercise professional judgment and maintain professional skepticism during the audit. We perform a risk assessment that helps us to identify areas that may have higher risk in order to really hone in our audit procedures on those areas with potential higher risk." The third bullet point, "We obtain an understanding of internal controls that are significant to the financial statements themselves." So, bank reconciliations, cash receipts, dispersments, payroll, those are the items that really drive the activity in the financial statements. So, we want to understand what controls are in place there to make sure they're operating effectively. The fourth bullet point, "We evaluate the appropriateness of the accounting policies used and the reasonableness of any significant estimates." And then, the last bullet point, "We conclude whether in our judgment there are any conditions or events when considered in the aggregate that would raise substantial doubt about the district's ability to continue as a going concern, and we don't have any concerns there." The last section on page two talks about the required supplementary information that's included. That's your management discussion and analysis. That's also the budget-to-actual information. Page three has a paragraph relating to the supplementary information that's included. So, that's aside from management discussion and analysis, aside from budget-to-actual, it's the combining schedules in the back, and it's also the schedule of expenditures of federal awards, when that is included in this packet. Since that's issued separately, that's a separate report. You'll see that at a later date. The last section on page three there talks about other reporting that's required by government auditing standards. That's on page 84 and 85 in the back, and we'll get there at the end. Page six, we are into management's discussion and analysis. Yeah, the table there on page six is the summary of the statement of net position. So, these are full accrual basis numbers that we're looking at here. So, as a reminder, when I say full accrual, that means I'm taking all of the funds of the district, general funds, special revenue, like food service or student activities, debt service funds, capital projects funds, combining all of those, and then, we're adding on capital assets and long-term obligations. That's how we get to the full accrual basis financial statements. So, just a couple of things to note on page six and page eight, and then, we'll go more towards the information you're used to seeing. You had total assets at June 30, 2025 on a full accrual basis of approximately $189 million. Total deferred outflows were approximately $25.1 million. On the liability side, well, one thing I actually wanted to mention too, on, in the total asset section, you'll see current and other assets. That includes cash and cash equivalents. That is up as of year-end as a result of the bond proceeds. So, I mentioned a couple spots. We'll see that play out. That's one of them. Under the liabilities section, current liability sits at about $7.8 million. That's down a little bit from the previous year. You were able to use some of your unearned revenue during the year, spend that down. That reduces the liability. Total liabilities were approximately $181.6 million. You have deferred inflows of about $34.5 million. And then, you've got total net position of a negative $1.68 million. And as a reminder, it's pretty common to have negative net position for a school district in the state of Michigan. Getting close to zero, though. Page eight, or close to a positive number, I should say. Page eight shows you the results of the operations, again, on the full accrual basis of accounting. So, the only thing I will mention on this page is that if you were to take revenues minus expenses, you've got about a $10 million improvement in net position from 2025. Page nine has some pretty good historical trend information. Particularly, the first section under property taxes shows you the mileage rates for the past five years. Those should look familiar. Under the state sources section, you have the per pupil allowance over the past five years, noting that that did not change from '23, '24 to '24, '25. On page 10, you have the five-year historical analysis of the student enrollment counts, and you were up approximately five from '23, '24 to '24, '25. Page 11 has some of the information that you would be more used to seeing. Page 11 has an expenditure comparison by function. So, this would be your fund level or modified accrual basis information here. Total instruction expenditures were approximately $32.6 million. They were just over $32 million in the previous year, pretty consistent. Similarly, under total instruction support, that's about $12 million, compared to about $11.8 million in the previous year. Down under the rest of the expenditure categories, the business office line item, that one does stick out a little bit. There was a fairly large tax chargeback or abatement that was recorded in that line item during fiscal year '25. So, just in case you were wondering why that doubled, that's the majority of it. Total general fund expenditures for '24, '25 were approximately $58.4 million. If you, if you look down a little bit further to the last two lines, you get the 2024 Capital Projects Fund and 2025 Capital Projects Fund expenditures, almost $2.5 million or a little over $2.5 million between the two. That's the new administration building and the high school additions. There's some other things in there too, but that's the majority of it. On page 12, you have the general fund budgetary highlights, again, with a five-year trend analysis on your budget-to-actual for the revenues. You budgeted a total of $57.6 million. You came in at $57.3 million. That's a variance of pretty much 0.5%. That is excellent. Similar story on the expenditure side, budgeted $58.778 million. Actual results came in at $58.36 million. That's a variance of .72%. Again, excellent. Nice job budgeting. Page 13 has a summary of the capital assets. One item to mention here is in that table in the middle of the page, where your capital assets are, the second line item down is construction in progress, about $2.3 million. That's the administration building and the high school improvements. Under the long-term obligations, you did have a new bond issuance, so that did increase your total long-term obligations, but you also made your required payments during the year, so that helped to decrease that slightly. And then, you've got factors bearing on the district's future listed at the bottom of page 13, and on to page 14. First one is student enrollment. So, the district did project an enrollment increase of 25 students for fiscal year '26. The second bullet point is related to the foundation allowance. Your original budget for fiscal year '26 included a $392 per pupil increase in the foundation allowance. At the top of page 14, we have the 31, section 31, double A funding. That is estimated to be reduced by $366,000 in the fiscal year '26 allocation. Retirement rate, certainly the ability of the state to continue to subsidize the stabilization rate remains a concern. The second to last bullet point, Ingam ISD Board of Education approved changes to the distribution of the special education funding to the locals, beginning with fiscal year '26. Changes in that plan are estimated to reduce the district's funding by $317,000 for fiscal year '26 and then, increase it by $483,000 in fiscal year '27, resulting in a net increase. And then, the last bullet point talks about the employee contracts, the latest to be approved on September 8, 2025. All right, let's go to page 16, and I'll keep this rolling. Page 16 and page 17 are your full accrual basis financial statements. We saw the summarized versions of those in the MDA, so I'm gonna go ahead and jump right to page 18. Page 18 is the balance sheet for the governmental funds at June 30, 2025. You have four major funds. That would be your general fund, your 2025 Capital Projects Fund, 2024 Capital Projects Fund, and the 2019 Sinking Fund. The rest of the funds are considered to be non-major, so they're just smushed together into that total non-major column. Cash and cash equivalents, about $17.1 million at the end of the year. Total assets across all funds, roughly $46.5 million. And when I mentioned earlier that cash and cash equivalents were $17.1 million, you also have restricted cash related to those bonds of roughly $21.7 million. On the liability side, total liabilities across all funds were roughly $7.2 million. Do have a little bit in the way of deferred inflows of resources for about $213,000. If we back those numbers off from total assets, we get total fund balance across all funds for the district of just over $39 million. The general fund fund balance as of year-end is just under $15 million. Of that, the amount that's considered unassigned is roughly $13.2 million or 22.6% of general fund expenditures. Total fund balance for the general fund is roughly 25.6% of general fund expenditures. And then, you've got, you can see the '25 Capital Projects Fund and the '24 Capital Projects Fund. Those have over $20 million in restricted fund balance as of year-end. Page 20 is what I'll go to next. We have the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances for the year ended June 30, 2025. Again, you have your four major funds, general fund, the two capital projects funds, and the sinking fund. Total revenue across all funds was approximately 25 point, sorry, $71.7 million. Had the wrong line item there. So, total revenue, $71.7 million. On the expenditure side... On the expenditure side, if you go to page twenty-one, you'll see total expenditures of roughly seventy-four point five million across all funds. A couple of lines below that, you've got net change in fund balance for the general fund was a decrease of just over one million. You can see the big increase in the twenty-five Capital Projects Fund of about eighteen point seven million, a decrease in the twenty-four Capital Projects Fund of about two million. Total net change in fund balance across all funds was an increase of approximately sixteen million. I'll back up for a second. If you go to the top of page twenty-one, you can see there the debt service principal repayments of about five point six million, as well as your interest at about four point three million. Couple of lines below that in the other financing sources section, you can see the proceeds of the bond issuance, approximately eighteen point two million. That's in the twenty twenty-five Capital Projects Fund. In your non-major funds, you can see that refunding bond proceeds of about twelve million and then the payment out to the refunded bond escrow agent of about twelve point five million. So that's where the bond plays out. Let's go to page twenty-six. Page twenty-six gives the reader the financial statements a summary of the revenues and the expenditures of your two capital projects funds that are active, the twenty twenty-five Capital Projects Fund and the twenty twenty-four Capital Projects Fund. The thing I wanted to mention on this page is that first paragraph talks about the twenty nineteen sinking fund. It is audited in accordance with section twelve twelve of the revised school code. We audited approximately eighty-five percent of those expenditures and had no findings, so that's great. The second paragraph talks about the bonds, where we are required to audit those in accordance with section thirteen fifty-one A of the revised school code. We tested approximately eighty-eight percent of those expenditures and had no findings as well. So that is great. Page thirty-seven is what I'll go to next. Just a couple more things here. Page thirty-seven is the detail of your capital assets as of year-end. I just wanted to mention here again, you can see the construction in progress of approximately two point three million in that additions column. And then if you keep scrolling down, you can see some other additions. For instance, the building and additions line item for seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand, that's auditorium lighting, or a lot of it. Number of other investments into the school district capital assets, but wanted to mention a couple of them there. Page thirty-eight is your detail of your long-term obligations. The table at the top of page thirty-eight starts with general obligation bonds. You had additions of approximately thirty-one point three million, that's the new bond and the premium. You had deletions of approximately twenty-one point three million, that's your annual payments that you were making, as well as the payment out to the refunded bond agent. The second column is compensated absences. That beginning balance of one million nine hundred and sixteen thousand, that's the restated number. So you did restate that number as of July one, twenty twenty-four for GAZB one oh one, that new accounting standard that I said was effective this year. The ending balance in compensated absences was just shy of two million. All right, let's go to bottom of page thirty-nine. You can see the future principal and interest payments that are due, just in case you were curious about that. Page fifty-five is what I'll go to next. I believe that's the budget to actual schedule. Yes. Lots of great information in the rest of the footnotes, but I'm going to jump to the budgetary comparison schedule for the general fund for the year ended June thirty, twenty twenty-five. Again, here, we can see the original budget, the final budget, and the actual results for the general fund. So the original budget showed a projected draw from fund balance of approximately one point nine million. The final budget showed a projected draw from fund balance of approximately one point one million. The actual results came in with a draw from fund balance of just over one million. On the revenue side, your budget to actual, I mentioned earlier, that was about a zero point five percent variance. That was excellent. Same thing on the expenditure side, where it's about zero point seven percent. That means you have a positive variance on the net change in fund balance line of approximately one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Overall fund balance, roughly twenty-six percent of total general fund expenditures. What this page tells me is we've had excellent fiscal accountability during fiscal year twenty-five. From the budget we adopted to what we actually did shows that result. So kudos there. Page seventy-one is what I'll go to next. Just one thing to note before we see our final report. Page seventy-one should be the combining balance sheet for the non-major special revenue funds. The food service fund balance is still slightly over the max, that's set by the USDA. M D E may require a spend-down plan, just to mention that. It's very common in the state for the food service fund balance to be over the max, so. Page eighty is what I'll go to next. And I'm just going to point to you, or point out to you on page eighty, eighty-one, and eighty-two, you can see the detail of the capital projects expenditures and the sinking fund expenditures during fiscal year twenty-five. It'll show you by location where those amounts were spent. So on page eighty-one, you can see the majority of it did go towards the middle school and the high school. Page eighty-one, majority went towards the high school and the administration building. Same thing on page eighty-two. Page eighty-four is the last of the pages that we're going to visit tonight. Page eighty-four and eighty-five is the auditor's report that's required by government auditing standards. It's our report on internal control over financial reporting. If we had any material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, or other audit findings to note, they would be in this report, and we don't have any, so it's a clean report today. So that's excellent. Any questions on the financial statements? Happy to entertain them. I jumped past the retirement footnote. I'll let you guys read that at your leisure.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, is there anything else from Mr. Nielsen?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Do you have any idea how long before the, you'll find out about that?
I don't. No, I have not heard anything in terms of when they expect the compliance supplement to be released. What I have heard, and I don't know that it's public information or approved public information, but we have heard that they don't expect any significant changes to the testing we're required to do. So we have operated off that in designing our tests for this current year. We don't expect any significant changes, which is why I can preliminarily say that no findings, but I can't, I can't rubber stamp it yet.
Is that something being held up by the federal government shutdown?
Yeah, that, well, it is now, certainly. Yeah, typically, we get that document in May or June every year, and it's almost November. We don't have it yet, so. Yeah, unfortunately. But once we get it, it will be issued within thirty days. That'll be filed with M D E perfectly on time, according to their requirements, so. And then I'll mention, Kenzie sitting out here was the team lead on the audit this year. So she did the majority of the work, so I just wanted to give her a thank you as well.
Liz, thank you.
Thank you.
And there will be an after-party where we'll be reading the, the contents of this report with Mr. Nielsen, page by page.
Page by page, yeah.
Everyone is, that's a public meeting, so everyone's welcome to be there for that.
I'd prefer an interpreter, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Kudos to Lisa.
Yay, Lisa.
Yeah, everybody who took part in that, that's a, it's a heavy lift, and so thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is board discussion. I've not heard from any board members that had anything on their mind, but obviously, this is a place where we can talk about these things that come up. So if there's any board discussion, go ahead, you know, put it out there.
Someone from Glen Cairn reached out to us to thank us for our support for the, the letter. Was there an update? Did she give us an update on that?
Well, just that what was passed. So the city, city did vote in favor of blocking trucks from coming down Harrison of a certain weight class. So there's still a missing weight class that they're going to work with to eliminate all the trucks coming up over that hill and then potentially coming down to the, but that's, that's in progress.
I have noticed the traffic is up there, and I think it might just be related to all the construction happening on one twenty-seven. I don't know why, but the, there has been more traffic on that road.
On Harrison?
Yeah, on Harrison. So, and there's a big bottleneck there where that intersection is with Saginaw. So. Well, and thank you for taking the lead on that last week.
Yeah, I just wanted to give an update. Thanks for the technicality.
I just have one thing I want to give you a heads up that you'll be receiving from me. So new this year with our budget is we have to decide whether or not we would like to opt in to the thirty-one AA school safety and mental health funds. And this year, they are tied with some stipulations. And so Trune is recommending that the board take action on whether or not to opt in to these funds. I have a Trune opinion letter on how to go about doing that, along with M D E F A Q about these funds that I'll share with all of you. We have until November sixteenth, so we would take action at the November tenth meeting on this. It'll be on our finance committee agenda for next Monday. So that group will hear about it then, but I will get you all the materials so you can review them in advance. We're still looking, we've discussed this at our superintendent's meeting, our county meeting last week, and we're also awaiting two other legal opinions, just from two other law firms, because it's not typical that the board would take action to, whether or not to opt in to these funds, because it's not been the way it's been done in the past. But with the stipulations that are there, I think it's worth discussing and taking a look at. Right now, with the money that's allocated for thirty-one AA for the state, it amounts to about a hundred and forty dollars a pupil for East Lansing, which would be just over five hundred thousand dollars. And if, that would be the minimum if other districts opt out, our per pupil amount would go up. So we use those funds for a lot of personnel. Our safety team at the high school and our safety team at the middle school are both funded through our thirty-one AA funds. Our district mental health coordinator is funded through our thirty-one AA funds. So it's very significant funding to us, for us. And pending anything, at this point, I would recommend opting into these funds. I'd have a hard time not accessing these funds. I think it would increase vulnerability to our district if we didn't access and utilize our school safety and mental health funds. But there are some new stipulations that are tied to opting into those. So I will share them. I'll send them out to everybody. Like I said, it'll go to finance committee, but I'll also make time to talk to anybody else if you have questions about it. But that would be on our agenda for November tenth as an action item.
These are state funds, correct?
Correct.
So it's not like we have to let ICE officers into our buildings and sort of the stipulation?
It's really more about if there's a mass casualty event at your school, what we're kind of agreeing to allow access to and, and what we may be giving up in terms of some attorney-client privilege there. It's, I think a lot of this, from my understanding, is written as an outcome of some of the investigation at Oxford. And so this is, I think, trying to put some pieces in place that would probably offer more transparency if there was an investigation with, for a mass casualty event. So definitely worth taking a look at and understanding what those stipulations are. But at this point, I would, without any new information still pending, I'd recommend that we still access them. So to come, just giving a heads up.
Well, thank you for that. And I will say that you mentioned that this funding is essential for a lot of our safety team members. And I've had the occasion over the last few weeks to speak to some middle school teachers and parents specifically, and they've been very impressed by the performance of the safety team in the building and just the way that passing periods, downtime in the hallways, it seems like things are going really well.
Our seven individuals between the middle school and high school are, every single one of them is outstanding. We've really, really got a nice, nice group of safety team members.
Truly.
They really, really connect with our kids and, but, and the adults. But they are really, really great group, so we are very, very fortunate to have them.
Yeah.
All right, well, stay tuned. More to come on that for our next meeting.
Right. Should, we'll have to, we have to create one.
Every day. Every day is safety team month.
All right, is there anything else for board discussion? Okay, we can move on. The next item on the agenda is our action items. Can I get a motion on action item A, audited financial statements for the year ended June thirty, two thousand twenty-five?
I move that the Board of Education accept the audited financial statements for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five as presented.
Second.
Motion was made by trustee Edsel, seconded by trustee Taikaki. I know you just had a lengthy presentation about these statements, but does anybody wish to have, does anyone have any more questions or comments before we move to a vote? All right, we'll move to a vote. All in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion carries unanimously. The next item is policy update.
I move that the Board of Education approve the update of policy fifty-four twenty, sex education as presented.
Second.
Motion was made by trustee Edsel, seconded by trustee Ferris Highland. Is there any discussion on this topic?
Just a little background, the paragraph that was removed was redundant. Trune determined it was redundant. We asked that question back to Trune. And so that's why it's just delayed after the other policies that we've approved in the last couple of meetings.
Any other discussion on this policy update? All in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda is our committee reports. The first is the Academic and Technology Committee. That's trustee Lyons is the chair of that committee. Trustee Chambers serves on that committee. Do we have any report from that committee? I believe we're waiting until Mr. Dobson is, starts before we.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, we haven't, we have not, well, we had it, but not since the last.
I don't think we've, yeah, I think you're right.
Okay.
Mister, once, once we get Mr. Dobson on board, I think we'll have plenty of work, or Dr. Dobson on board, we'll have plenty of work for that committee.
Yep.
Facilities committee, trustee Ferris.
We're trying to get in the books, a meeting November sixth at noon, so we'll hopefully meet then.
Finance committee, trustee Edsel.
If you'll all pick up your books and turn and pay to.
Don't you dare.
It might be the last time I get to.
Don't you dare. We love that annual joke.
We discussed this in depth, that finance, I actually missed last meeting, so I think Abby did an update in my absence. So we're good. We meet Monday at one o'clock. Do we know where? Are we in the hub? Do we know? Okay.
Thank you. And, you know, I, this is a lot, but I suspect that the city's books are a little bit more complicated than this.
Have you seen their online budget, though?
No, I haven't.
It's kind of a joke.
Okay.
Expenditures, revenues total. I'm like, really? That's the detail that you give the community? Yeah, anyhow.
Well, yeah, we have all the, the legal stuff that we have to do these audits, so.
I was wondering that, too. I'll find out, maybe, or maybe not.
Intergovernmental, intergovernmental relations, trustee Torres.
We have our meeting, our next meeting, October twenty-ninth, nine thirty to ten thirty at the hub.
Very good. October twenty-ninth is Wednesday. Personnel committee, nothing to report at this time. Policy committee, trustee Edsel.
We meet Monday at ten thirty in the hub.
And Ingham School Officers Association, trustee Taikaki. And Ingham School Officers Association, Trustee Taikaki.
We are meeting next Wednesday, the 5th, in person at the Beekman Center for a tour.
Oh, that's true. That's cool.
You're going to get a grand tour and everything?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, very cool.
Want to come?
When, when is it?
Eight, eight 30 in the morning on Wednesday.
This in, in two days?
No, on the 5th.
On the 5th?
That'll be the day after elections. You're going to be up only.
Is that election day?
I'll be up. I'll still be up.
Well, it's the day after election.
Day after. I might still be up.
Yeah.
All right. Now, the next item on the agenda is announcements. Our next meeting is November 10th, and it's going to be back here, is that right?
Yeah.
At, at November 10th, 2025, at 7:00 PM. And that's all the announcements I have. Are there any other announcements? All right, we will stand adjourned at 7:54. Thank you all for being here. See you on November 10th.
Thank you.